You heard what?
I heard kids.
Kids.
Yeah, that's what I got.
Well, it looks three o'clock on May sixth, twenty twenty five.
My. My.
And you couldn't hear me? That's a surprise. Okay, this is the May sixth at three o'clock. This is a meeting of the Board of UNA County Commissioners being held in the the Commission Chamber Room. We have Jeremy Raymond with the prayer and Tanya with the Tanya Craven with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father and him are grateful to meet today at this commission meeting and grateful for the moisture that we received last night and be able to water our crops and our valley. We're grateful for all of our many blessings watch over us today as during this commission meeting. Bless the commissioners that he'll be able to make sound decisions for our county. We're grateful for this beautiful place in which we have to live, work and play and help us to serve one another and love one another and we're grateful for all that we have to say this.
Amen.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Very nice. Before we get any further into this, if you have your electronic beepers, bells, whistles, make sure you put them on silent or turn them off, please. Quit looking at me, Jeremy. Last time I said it, my phone went off about halfway through, so I'm guilty as anybody. All right, our first order of business today is approval of the minutes of April twenty second, twenty five meeting and the April twenty third, twenty twenty five work session.
I'm reviewed, I've reviewed those and I would make a motion that we approve those.
Okay, any comments, statements?
Seems good.
Okay, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Caleb, have you got something for us? Even though you look a little different than Mike Wilkins.
Good afternoon. Caleb Hall from the Clerk Otter's Office here to present the warrants. So I've got two from four twenty four and five one. So from four twenty four, this was the amount of two million, six hundred and sixty eight thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars. Just some highlights, there were contract payments in here. We do those monthly around the twentieth and then let's see, Atkinson Sound for the amount eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And this was a big one. Central Canal, the one million, five hundred and ninety two thousand. And there was a backhoe loader lease for, from Caterpillar for seventeen thousand, seven hundred and twenty four dollars. And then for Northeastern Counseling, this was the mental health match and that was a hundred and ninety three thousand, three hundred and seventy three dollars. And then workers' comp, it's our audit for twenty twenty four and that was twenty one thousand, eight hundred and forty nine dollars.
All right, on the canal, that's a pass through, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So we've been waiting for those funds to come in and then we'll write the check back out and so we're
Right.
I know we issued one today, so we released that to them for about one point four, so. All right, any questions on that?
No sir. You have five one.
And then for five one, this was smaller, this was mainly M and O for payroll as well. So that was three hundred and ninety seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty two dollars and forty eight cents.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Call for a motion?
Just your approval, yep.
I'll make a motion that we approve the warrants as presented by Caleb Hall. Do I need to put the dates or is that good?
I think it was in there.
Yeah, as long as you put it the way you did. Okay, any further questions? Any call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
You have any tax matters, sir? Okay, we'll continue on no tax matter today. Alicia, U E T N Network for Small Town Comeback Contract.
All right, as we discussed, the U E T N, so like the U E N Network PBS, reached out to see if they could use our content that we created from Small Town Comeback. They're going to combine a whole bunch of those episodes and do a feature on Vernal and UNA County and what we're doing out here. And so this is just the contract between them and UNA County saying that they can use the stuff that we produced.
Any funds involved?
No funds involved, no. They, in fact, they are providing the funds that will be for V six Media to combine all the files together, so they're paying for that.
Okay, because I noticed they just got a big cut.
I did too, yeah.
It's earned me a little bit there.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And we discussed this before that, so they'll do that. Vernal City and Strata Networks are also partners in that and they're all signing their own agreement, so.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to accept the contract?
I would make that motion.
Comment, questions?
I would, I would just say, I think this is amazing. Your, your little videos are incredible.
They're really cool.
This kind of exposure is, is a really, really big deal, so congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. I think it's great. It's a great way that we're showcasing all the amazing things that we're doing here in UNA County and creating a, you know, a story, a history. Because like I said in the beginning, like ten years from now, we're not going to remember what we were ten years ago. And so this is a great way for us to be able to look back and how we've been able to build and grow.
Okay, I'll call for a vote.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay, BTB Innovations Agreement, ma'am.
All right, so first off, here on the front row is Ranch Pratt, so he is BTB Innovations. I saw a few, you shake his hand and you may have known him. He's been in the community before with different things, but he came to us, like we stated before, a few months ago and asked if they could partner with us on Vernal Rock Rally. So UNA County will still maintain the name Vernal Rock Rally and the registration for Vernal Rock Rally and we will be partnering with B two B Innovations. They'll bring in some additional events that will be owned by them that will happen probably at Buckskin Hills, that's where we're looking at right now, that will be, that will coexist with that event and then bring in more people as well. So a couple of things from the working meeting that we had that we updated in, in the agreement. So UNA County will hold out ten percent of the registration fees for the admin costs for us to run registration and all of that. Also, when B two B Innovations brings on a sponsor, they will run that by UNA County to make sure that we're all in line with the image that we want to keep for the event and for the county. So both of those things have been added into, into the agreement.
And I'm so sorry in our society today that we have to monitor those.
And there is one more.
Uh oh.
Yeah, the tickets. I thought it was the ticket prices or something, or was that on a different thing?
No, the ticket prices will remain the same as, as seventy five dollars. They would need to bring that before to us if they wanted to up the registration. Now they'll have their own registration that will go with other events that come along with, with Vernal Rock Rally, but Vernal Rock Rally itself will stay at the same registration price. And then, and then the additional events will be like, you'll pay to do the Barbie races or you'll pay to do the rock crawler, you'll pay to do these different things. And that all will go through B two B Innovations because those are their events.
Less bookkeeping for us, a lot more for you.
Yeah, and then the last, the last thing was the one year. After the first year, we'll sit down, look at it. They know they have three years to, before we go out to bid again, but we will come back together at the end of the first year, look everything over, make sure everyone's good with how it's going, if there's any adjustments we need to make, and then bring that before you guys if there is.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between BTB Innovations and UNA County as presented by Alicia Cravill.
Any comments, questions, concerns?
I would, I say too much probably, but I'd love to see the shook your head.
Mm-hmm, I did. I'm agreeing with everybody else out there.
I'd love to see this interaction between the, the public and the county working together and the public taking ownership of these things instead of government kind of stuff. So kudos to both of you and making it work. Thank you.
We're excited, we're excited to have Ranch on the team and, and build this great event together, so.
Appreciate that, definitely. All righty. Do I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. Your shoulders just got a lot groupier. More weight.
Hello, Commissioners. Jess from UNA County Facilities and I have a lease agreement here for the UNA Transportation Special Service District. They're renting that office there. It is starting today. It'll expire December thirty first, twenty thirty. It's a five-year lease. It's three hundred dollars a month. It will go up starting in January of twenty twenty six. It'll go up two and a half percent per year for inflation. And it will need to be signed by the Chair from UTSSD and our Commission Chair.
I believe I stated in the work session that the Chair of the UTSSD has already signed a copy, but they need to get that probably to you or to the county.
Yep.
So they approved it in our last meeting.
Perfect.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make, go ahead.
I'll make the motion that we approve the contract, the UNA Transportation Special Service District Office-Based Lease Agreement as presented.
Okay, any further? I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jess.
We did review this contract and the price, it does increase. It's based upon other contracts that we have with other entities in county buildings. So it's not, they're not getting a sweet deal or anything. It's the standard.
It's actually the exact same square footage cost. Actually, yeah, it's right there, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Craven.
Tanya Craven, Human Resources. So Policy seven hundred, we have had this at work session a few times. The space in which we're requesting there to be updates is in the lodging expenses section. Number one, there was some concern regarding meals and when they're offered at conferences or offered at hotels and offered at different places, whether or not per diem was still going to be paid out for those or after having conversation and discussion and work session, the writing would be if the hotel training or meeting provides a meal, then the employee will be eligible or sorry, the employee will not be eligible for reimbursement of the meal expense unless approved by the department head elected official. And then under number two, I was requesting that there be an increase in the amount that an employee is reimbursed if they stay with a friend or a relative out in the city as opposed to the hotel expense. It's been sitting at twenty dollars for over ten years and I just was requesting it be increased to a minimum of fifty dollars.
Minimum or two fifty dollars?
Up to fifty dollars, yeah. Two fifty would be nice, but no, fifty dollars.
Okay.
And those are the only changes in the policy.
Okay.
Thank you for addressing that.
Yes, absolutely.
I'll call for a motion?
I'll make a motion to amend Policy seven hundred, employees' travel as presented by Tanya Craven.
Any questions or comments? Call for a vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye, thank you. Sheriff Labram?
Okay, this is the modification of grant or agreement. This is modification number six with the Forest Service and this is for wages and mileage for our patrol on the forest between, it states as the last signature is gathered, so I need the Chair's signature mine and then I gotta send it on to get two more for, for a signature. So until nine thirty of twenty five and the amount is for nine thousand dollars.
Any questions, comments? Call for a motion?
Sorry, was that an additional nine? Or that's just for this year, they're nine thousand?
We've had, they'll, they'll let us carryover monies and last year we did have a little carryover. This, we used it all last year, so. Nine thousand has been pretty standard for the last few years.
We got thirty thousand for something else recently. Do you recall what that was for?
From the Forest Service?
I don't remember. I just remember seeing something, maybe it was B L M. It was an amendment we didn't expect.
I believe that was the increase. The federal government, didn't they increase something a couple of weeks ago? I remember reviewing it for the Sheriff's Department, but I can't remember what it was.
I think it was court security.
It was, it was court security.
They do, yeah.
That's right.
Good thing you guys got memories, mine doesn't. Okay, thank you. There are, call for a motion?
Any contracts?
I would make a motion that we approve the Forest Service Grant Modification for Law Enforcement as presented by Sheriff Labram.
Any discussion?
You have a, looked at this, haven't you?
Yes, I've looked at it. It's, it's just pretty standard, yeah.
Just the routine. Call for a vote? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
And she needs a copy, right?
Yeah, make sure when we get it back, Sheriff, if we get a copy over to Ty. Yeah, thank you. Okay, Fair Lady?
Melanie Silkox, Western Park. The first one's Utah Horse Pullers Association. The contract is for seven thousand dollars. It will be a free event for Friday night of the fair. Lauren has reviewed this contract.
Thank you. Okay.
And we discussed these all in work session.
Yes.
Yep, so.
Call for a motion?
I would make a motion, we approve the Horse Pullers Association as part of the twenty twenty five UNA County Fair Contract as presented by Melanie Silkox.
Questions, comments? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. And aye.
Okay.
Those are pretty cool, by the way. They really are.
The next one is for Alan Sands. There's two performers that will come. One is a comedy, magic and juggling show. The next is a comedy, ventriloquist and hypnotist. Those also will be free events. They'll do Friday and Saturday. They'll do two to three shows a day. The cost for those guys to come out is sixty eight hundred. Total for both.
He's not gonna do any hypnosis this year, is he?
He said he, it would depend on the crowd. If we get a lot of little kids, they're hard to hypnotize, so he'll be more ventriloquism. But if we get adults, then he would, he can do the hypnosis.
You said that one's free as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, call for a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the contract for Alan Sands Entertainment as presented by Melanie Silkox.
Question or comments? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
I should make mention, Lauren did review that contract as well.
He was very nice to work with, by the way.
Good.
I was. Oh, I was like, wow, mark this on your calendar.
No, Mr. Sands was very good to work with.
He is a nice guy, he is. The next one is the Monster Truck Family Tour Contract. This one will be the Saturday Night Performance. There was three different options that we talked about in the work session. We opted for option three, which they will come in, be in charge of the ticket sales. We will take a dollar per ticket sold, but we will not pay them a fee to come out to put that show on. Lauren has also reviewed this contract and everything that's in it that we will provide, such as the Skid steer water truck and stuff, is a normal thing that we typically provide.
Okay. Motion?
Um, I would approve this, I mean approve, I would make a motion to approve the Monster Truck Family Tour as presented by Melanie Silkox.
Questions, your discussion? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. One more, Mel.
The next one is the United Truck and Tractor Pulls. It will be more trucks. The public can participate in it. The tractors are booked somewhere else for this particular day. We will pay them twenty thousand dollars to come out. Friday is our free night for everything at the fair, so this will not be a charge to any patron coming in. We'll have the horse pulls and the truck pulls all that night. Lauren has also reviewed this contract.
Okay, call for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the United Truck and Tractor Pullers Contract as presented by Melanie Silkox.
Questions, comments? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Deanna. Yurle, ma'am?
Okay, so the first item I have is a rezone. Property owned by N and E Properties located at ten fifteen South, fifteen hundred West and nine ninety one South, fifteen hundred West. So here, just on the map of Vernal, this is Highway forty coming down and it's just, whoop, zoom's in fast, I forget. These two properties right here are what we're looking at rezoning. Okay, so those properties are currently zoned R A one and they're right next to a subdivision that's zoned R one. And they're looking for an R one zoning is what they'd like it to be rezoned to. The future land use in this area is moderate density residential, which is equal or close to our R one zoning, which is what they're looking for. This did go to a public hearing, a Planning Commission meeting just a couple of weeks ago and it was approved unanimously and there were no public comments on this rezone. Looking for approval of that today.
Okay. Call for a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve the rezone as presented by Deanna Nyberg.
Any questions, comments? No. Call for a vote? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Phase One Properties, ma'am.
Okay, this next property, it's owned by the school district and it's being purchased by Phase One Properties and they want to rezone it before they purchase it. Currently it's zoned R A one and they're looking for an R one zoning. This property is surrounded by properties that are also R A one, but if you look at the size of the properties, this size of property today wouldn't be approved in an R A one zone. They would have to go to an R one zoning. They're all a little bit too small for R A one. So it will be, the properties that they develop will be a minimum of about like these ones up here. This is eight thousand square feet. That's about as small as they can go. So they're looking to rezone that to R one. The future land use in this area is that moderate density residential again. And that is similar to our R one zoning. There was a public hearing on this for, with, with Planning Commission and there were, there was one public comment with concern about the water. This Phase One Properties is working with Ashley Valley, so they're aware of water situations and what's available. And then it was voted unanimously to recommend approval of this rezone.
Okay, thank you. Call for a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the rezone for Phase One Properties as presented by Deanna Nyberg.
Thank you. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All right, ordinance oh four twenty three, two oh two five oh one.
Okay, so this ordinance came about because we had someone apply for, he was looking for an oilfield construction company. And there's nothing really in our use right now in the use table for the UNA County specifically for oilfield use. What we've been doing in the past is we borrow from other uses like outdoor storage, office space, light manufacturing and put something together that works for specifically what they're doing. And that makes it kind of hard for approvals and it makes it hard because a lot of those things we're borrowing from have, they all have different conditions. Some of them make them stay half a mile away from others. Some of them have to be a thousand away from, thousand feet from homes. So it makes it a little bit difficult for them to be anywhere but the industrial zone and the industrial zone in UNA County is quite small. So what Planning Commission came up with was to make an oil, well, we, after Commissioner Norton's comments at the work session, we changed the name from Oilfield Service Companies to Industrial slash Energy Service Companies. And they would be a conditional use permit in the A three, A four, C two and M G one zones and permitted uses in the industrial zones. And this was presented at Planning Commission and it passed unanimously as a recommendation for approval.
How about it was approved by the Planning Commission?
What's that, sorry?
That's what she just said.
She said County Commission.
Oh, Planning Commission, whatever I said, it's planning.
I just wanted to make sure that we had passed this yet.
Planning Commission recommended approval.
Okay, call for a motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve ordinance number zero four dash twenty three dash two zero two five oh one as presented by Deanna Nyberg.
Questions or comments? Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, I'll have you do A and then we'll go to a public hearing on that one.
Sorry, but no?
If you will present A, the information on A, then we'll have a public comment.
Okay, so just one at a time. Okay, so the first property is an ordinance zero five zero six two zero two five oh one. And this is a request for a road vacation. And this is a, uh, request for a road vacation, um, a portion of a Class D unnamed road on property owned by Carefree Homes Marketing and Shane Meacham and on public land owned by or managed by Bureau of Reclamation. I'll just find it on the map. It's laggy. Okay. So this road, um, these four properties right here are owned by Carefree Homes. And it's got this Class D road running right through the middle of them. And so Carefree Homes applied to have that road vacated, so that wouldn't be, um, right in the middle of their property. The road leads to public land right here, managed by the Bureau of Reclamation. Um, this property also has access from US, um, Highway ninety-one ninety-one and this little valley B road. So it does have other access to it. Um, and the road also runs through this little, just the corner of another private property here. Um, the property, or the, sorry, the road vacation was noticed properly and, um, sent, letters were sent to all property owners and to UDOT and we did not get any. UDOT was okay with it.
Okay. Now is the time for a public hearing pertaining to this particular piece of property in this ordinance. If you have something you would like to say about this, please step forward to the microphone, identify yourself and proceed to enlighten us.
Uh, my name is Burke Blazer with Carefree Homes, so I am an interested party. We acquired these lots a few years ago. We're unaware that there was a road. Um, it doesn't, even though it shows here on the map as a dotted line, physically, uh, there's nothing there. Uh, and we would just request that it be vacated so we can go ahead and build on those four lots. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
If I ask Deanna a couple of questions?
Sure, certainly.
With this road, is, it's the entire length of the road from Fifth East all the way up to the, that other, that other D road.
Yes, it is.
Which is a gravel pit draw?
Mm-hmm.
The property own, the other property owner where the road went through the corner, y- you tended to contact them, but you, you did not hear back anything?
Right, yep, we sent them a letter, didn't hear anything back.
And, and this is the property where they have, you often see people sledding or, um, using their, their, their motorized bikes or stuff on the hills right there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And it would not affect their access to that, correct?
Correct, right.
Honda Hills?
I think that's what they call it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Deanna.
Yep.
Okay. Anything further? All right, we'll close public hearing on that. B, please.
Okay, so B is a public, or yes, public hearing for a road vacation request. The ordinance number zero five zero six two zero two five oh two. Um, this is a portion of Class D County Road Steinerger Draw Road. And it's on private land owned by Matthew and Katie Massey, um, James and Sherry Allen. Um, so this Steinerger Draw, as you can see, um, starts here, this is their first property. It's gonna go through those two properties, through this third one and then up through the fourth and end here. So the, um, request is just for the portion of the road that's on their private land. Um, there's more private properties up north that it accesses and then this is BLM here. Um, the BLM property is accessed, can be accessed from other Class D roads. Um, and we aren't, like I said already, said that we aren't gonna, aren't asking to vacate anything on BLM, just on the private land. Um, this road was noticed and letters were sent to property owners. And, um, no objections from UDOT.
And Deanna, it doesn't affect any of the properties north of it?
No, it doesn't, so I'll see that a little so you can see. So Moonshine Arch Road comes over from the highway and connects here. Um, and that's where all these properties can access from the highway there.
And that road will still be, uh, will still be on the county map and, and available for use, that part of the road, correct?
Yep.
Okay, call for a motion?
Oh, no, just the public hearing now?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. And let's kind of probably comment on that then, if anybody has something they wanna say, please come forward. State your name. I apologize, huh? Intent on trying to find where this road is, make sure we aren't locking somebody.
So my name is Seth Taylor, we actually have private property, I'm here on behalf of my grandmother, who's ninety-four, been taking care of her property for years. So this road actually goes through our property as well and we applied to vacate it previously and was told that we could not vacate it through our property. So that is my concern, it goes through our property, it does hit the BLM. Stretch of BLM, then it hits the Drippin' Chicken, which is Matt Massey and his family that goes through these other, then there's other private landowners all the way to Redfleet, where apparently this Class D road ends. So that is my concerns, is if we're not willing to vacate it on one, why should we vacate it on the others? And in years past, we have vacated parts of this same Class D road on Harley Jackson's ground as well. Lauren went with me once and said if we're gonna do it on one, we need to be consistent and so that's, that's my concern with, with this vacation.
So you have a road vacation for the portion of the road on your property, correct?
Yes, every Class D road on my property.
And, and that is still in the process, correct?
Yes, I got a letter saying that we're not gonna vacate it at this time.
Right, it's still in the process, correct?
I'm just, that's just my comments, if we're gonna do it on this one.
It, it has not been denied as of yet, it's still in the process.
That's just why I'm making the comment, just so everyone's aware. Thank you.
Deanna, can you show me where that road is on his property?
So the one we're looking at vacating comes down here and crosses BLM just for this short stretch. And the property that he was just talking about, let me just go down a little bit. This property right here is the Taylor property and this Steinerger Draw goes there and then cuts through here.
Okay, and there's another way around that property?
Around the Taylor property or the, um, Massey?
Matthew.
Yeah.
Do you have to be on?
The Massey property, um, can be accessed from
Different places, okay.
The north and, well, yeah, south.
Good. Any other comment? Thank you. Close public comment on that. We'll go to C, ordinance oh five oh six, two oh two five oh two.
Okay, this is the same applicant on the same properties. Um, this is for a portion of County Road Drippin' Chicken Ranch Road. Um, ordinance number zero five zero six, two zero two five oh three. And that's just the road here that runs east and west. Runs across these three properties. Four. East and west rather than the north and south.
And Deanna, those are all private properties, correct?
Right.
It doesn't access public lands?
No, so it does on the, the Bureau of Reclamation is where it ends, right here. Um, and that can be accessed from the Steinerger, um, State Steinerger Road.
And that's not part of the application to vacate, correct?
Correct. They're only vacating what's on their property.
It looks like that road kinda goes into the corner of what I'm thinking is BLM. Right there, over just a little right, a little more right there.
Oh, gosh, sorry.
Actually go on to BLM?
Well, it looks like it may cross BLM there.
So is that considered an access to that corner of BLM?
Possibly, I, the, it would access the corner, if it is on the BLM, we'd probably have to get a survey to be sure, but, um, then that, I'm not sure if it's considered an access where it doesn't go any further than that, I don't know if it's, there's not another county road from beyond that, so I don't know what you can do with that, but, so I guess I'm not sure.
I can see from that corner on up the draw, but if that's access onto BLM, is that concerning?
Oh, you're saying from here?
I- i- if that road,
Onto BLM.
It would be access if that road,
To that, to BLM.
If it goes to BLM, right, right.
Which would allow you to access all that front property and the draws and everything there, so. I, I would. Okay, that would be a concern.
Okay, now it's time for public comment, we have any public comment on that?
Same comment from Taylor's?
All right, same statement, Mr. Taylor. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close public comment on that. So we will go into item thirteen, which is ordinance oh five oh six, two oh two five oh one.
Okay, and Matthew Garing has those.
Thank you, Matthew.
Matthew. Matthew Garing, uh, GIS. So ordinance number oh five oh six, two zero two five oh one. Um, portion of unnamed, Class D unnamed county road. Um, this is the Carefree, um, Carefree Homes Road. And we would just, uh, ask the county to, uh, vacate that road from the county map, transportation map.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So this is the Carefree Home on Honey Hills one?
This is the Carefree Homes, yes.
I'll make a motion, uh, that we approve ordinance zero five dash zero six dash two zero two five as presented.
Any comments or discussion? Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, sir.
Okay, and then, um, ordinance number zero five zero six, two zero two five oh two. This is the Steinerger Draw Road portion that is on the, um, Matthew and Katie Massey and Dixie Allen Properties. Uh, we asked the county to, um, uh, present this for a vacation and removal from the transportation map.
I would like to make a motion that, well, do I need to make a motion to request that we table both item fourteen and fifteen because this information about it crossing public land was just made known today? I was not aware of that and that, I think, needs to be addressed and we need to look at that.
You, you can do that?
And so that's the motion I would make.
Okay. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so fourteen, fifteen are tabled.
Okay, and then ordinance number zero four zero eight, two zero two five oh one. Vacation of the Class D County Road. Um, also known as the Deep Creek Road. Uh, we asked the county to, uh, run a motion to vacate that and to remove from the county map.
Matthew, do, do you know the history of this road or this, why, why this is?
Uh, so this one, the, uh, property owners were selling, um, one of their property and they found that a road went down through their property and they couldn't build on it with that road going through it. And so they wanted to remove the entire road. And we were able to remove a portion because, um, we, uh, missed a part of the county road that traveled through a small section of another property owner that we didn't notify. We went back and notified them. And they were okay with it and so now we're just vacating the rest of the road.
This is that small portion that was left off?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had a public hearing on this.
Yes.
Okay. Call for a motion?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number zero four zero eight dash two zero two five oh one as presented.
Call for a vote, if there's no questions or comments?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes. Okay. Thank you, sir. Notice of Grant an Agreement Award. Yes, it's you again, ma'am.
Okay, so this is an agreement with, um, the NRCS to increase funding for the piping of Central Canal. Um, this is just pass-through money, so Unica County is acting as the government agency sponsor for the grant. Um, they're looking for an increase from USDA of one million, seven hundred forty-three thousand, two hundred eight dollars and fifty-five cents. Um, and again, that's not money coming from Unica County, that's coming from USDA through Unica County and then to the central pipeline or Central Canal.
And in fact, we've confirmed that that, those funds are available through TRS.
Or USDA, from USDA?
Yes. I did have a question, does this affect the other parts of this project? I know there's, I believe, two other parts, this does not affect those in any way, does it?
I don't, I'm not sure.
Like our detention ponds?
I know that there's an increase, well, no, that's not, that's not the part of this, though. This, all that this said, or all I was told at least, was for the piping of the canal.
Um, but that, I was, Lauren, if you wouldn't mind clarifying on that, because there were actually three, weren't there three different things involved in this? But they have received the funding right now for this canal project, part of the project?
And I'm not familiar if, uh, what effect it would have on the others, if, if at all, 'cause it does not mention, I, I just looked through it again, it does not mention that again, or, or, doesn't mention anything about the other portions of that.
All right, I'm gonna reach out on this one. Wayne, enlighten us. Wayne Simper, and he's the chairman of this board, is that correct? Or something like that, some highfalutin job.
President of Central Canal. So, yeah, once these, once this project got through the EA process, those three projects split into three separate projects now. So each one's on their own, separate.
Well, this doesn't affect them then?
Shouldn't affect those others at all.
That was my only question.
They stand alone on their own, own stuff, so.
Thank you for clarification.
Yes.
Glad you're here.
Thank you.
Okay, call for a motion?
Uh, let me get back to over here, I'll do that. I will make a motion to approve the notice of grant an agreement of award as presented by Deanna Nyberg.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, anyone like to make a public comment? Okay, a couple of things, we want, housekeeping, we wanna get out here. If I can find my paper. All right, as we have said in the past, if you bring us with a question, we'll do some research and we'll bring it forth, the answer that we've come up with. This is pertaining to the last meeting that we had. Citizen Jeff Shul questioned as to the safety of the Service Canal Road, saying that Provo and Orem had had lots of crime on their trails. Community Development Director reached out to Provo. James at Provo City Trails, he said, parts of the trail will get up to four to five thousand, thirty trips a day, some of the trail is managed and maintained by Utah County. They have posted fifteen minute, or fifteen mile speed limit. They're in the process of widening the trail to fourteen feet. Construction cost is the largest expense, trail is a huge draw for locals and visitors both. There have been some enforcement issues, most of the enforcement issues are near the top of the trail in the forested area. Most of the issues have been with homeless people. There are way more user, user conflicts than actual crime, i.e. drug, sexual assault, rape, robbery, et cetera. There's not been a heavy burden or a huge increase in funding for the police department. Police department does patrol the trail on pedal bikes. The pros outweigh the cons ten to one. He also talked with Matt Taylor of Orem City, who is over the, the, uh, parks and the trails. He has not heard of any crime on the trail. He has not heard of any crime on the trails in the past five years. He's been there for five years. He's going to reach out to the police department, see if they have any information about crime in the trails. He did not return an email saying they had any issues at all. No regular patrol of the trails. They do have a bike unit, but it's just some of the officers that have a bike. And when they have time, they go and ride. It's not mandatory. Trailmaster plan was just finished up a few years ago. There are no mention of crime or big burdens and on the police from any of the public comments or from the city staff. So that is the answer to that. It doesn't appear that his concern has any weight to it. So we will move on from there. Did I leave something at the office? Okay, we have an election coming up for the Water Board, Ashley Water and Sewer. We'll discuss this further on our work session, which will be next week on Wednesday. We'll have one tomorrow, but this will be slated for the next week. And this will be brought up. And also, the filing date is June 2nd to June 11th. You've got to file within those few days, nine days. And you would file at the clerk's office here at the county building. Part of it is, we get a lot of complaints and a lot of concerns and a lot of positive feedback. The bottom line, if you want it changed, then you need to be part of the issue to get in there and get it changed. We strongly request the public to look at this really hard and see if it's something that would fit them. The people that are on the board right now, there's, I want to say a five-person board? Seven, one or two. Anyhow, it's an odd number. Two of them are being replaced or have to run again. So it's an opportune time if you want to try to step in and see. It's like anything else, it's politics until the fat lady sings, "We don't have a clue who's won." So by all means, put the word out. If you see somebody that might be interested in that, tell them to look into it. Okay? Okay, also, a week, a week from now, I'm going to quit saying that. On the 14th, that's when this next work session will be pertaining to everything I'm seeing today. We'll discuss the Via Ferrata rules. And right away that we are requesting for parking area up there with the BLM. And basically, any concerns for the Via Ferrata, we'd like them brought forth. We need to understand our work sessions are where all of this is discussed with the public. That gives us an opportunity not only to read or hear what's being said, but to also be able to maybe do a little investigation on our own if we have further questions. Or at least time to mull it over in our brain so it's not just a drop dead, this is the way it is in 24 hours. Because we need more information sometimes. So it's very helpful if you come and voice your opinions and tell us your concerns. You're always welcome to come to the commissioner's office or call us and talk to us to keep us advised on what your feelings and thoughts are. We are not perfect. We're just three people trying to do the best for our whole community. Oh, our work session time will change on June 4th. It'll be on Wednesdays, but it'll be 10 o'clock in the morning. As you can tell, not too many people have been showing up to our noon time, which is what we're trying to do is to make it so you come on your work hour or your lunch hour if you wanted to. It just didn't really work out that well. It'd be more convenient to work at 10 o'clock in the morning. And it will be in the large conference room up in the commission office. Anything else? Is it time for Willis? It's time for Willis.
Adjourned.
Thank you all very much. We are adjourned. I'm sorry, ma'am, we can't serve anything.